Here.
Elton Number Eugene.
Here.
Elton Number Tucker.
Here.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Dennis, can you please see this?
Yes, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. And so what we'll do now is we'll go on to... Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Announcements of action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing... No reportable action taken in closed session.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rita. So we'll move on to C1. So this is public appearances. This is for matters not appearing on the agenda. So if you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit to each person's presentation of three minutes, and has requested the longer presentation consented to council in writing. So do we have anybody for public comments for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to C2. For matters appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor at that time. State your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit to each person's presentation of three minutes. Do we have anybody for public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item D. Consent agenda?
Vote to approve.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
Two seconds, please vote. All right, motion pass. Thank you very much. Moving on to action items. E1, discussion action, City of Imperial Public Library hours of operation.
Amber's gonna handle this one, as well as the next one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the City of Imperial Public Library hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. till 7:00 p.m., Friday, 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., while community services office hours are from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The community services office was moved into the library on October 31st of this year. In order to continue the same office hours, the library doors are open for public access. Between the hours of 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, the library is accessible to the public. During the month of November, the library was opened at 8:00 a.m. in order to provide public access to the community services office, and during this time, library services were provided. The earlier hours received a positive response from our library patrons. The Department of Community Services requests the changing of the library hours to open at 8:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, keeping the same closing times on Saturday or hours. It is the staff's recommendation that the city council authorize the recommended hours of operation for the Imperial Public Library and Community Services Office.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on this?
I'm always in favor of better hours than libraries, so that's awesome.
So you got a lot of positive feedback on that?
Yes, yes, we're serving different ages, and we have our older people coming in, and I think we could offer more programs for the younger, like the preschool ages.
Like the, what is it, the old that we used to have over here?
Yes, the rain...
Family Treehouse.
Yeah, Family Treehouse, yeah.
So services like that, we can start offering for that for the stay-at-home?
Yes, and there is a grant coming up in 2020 for early learning in families.
Great.
Not having trouble staffing the extra hours, changing people around?
That's gonna be depending... Right now, I'm being creative with hours, but right now, we are missing our library supervisor, so with that person, we would be fine, or as we move forward on the agenda.
Your agenda, I have...
Yeah, we have items that we talked about.
If that goes through, that takes care of it.
How are you liking in the office?
It's great. I actually have the library regulars are starting to say hello to me, so I feel accepted.
Good.
You get to see people during the day now, too, not just be watching glass, that's nice.
Good.
I like the hours. I'll move to approve the change in hours.
Got a motion?
Second.
Two... A second, please vote. Always good things to improve for the community. Okay, motion pass. Move it on to E2, discussion action, Third Amendment to Parks and Landscape Maintenance Agreement with Executive Landscape.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Executive Landscape entered into a two-year professional service agreement for park and landscape maintenance on January 4th of 2017. The agreement provides for the possibility of two one-year extensions, provided the extension is on the same terms and conditions. An additional one-year extension was approved by city council on February 6th of 2019, extending the agreement through January 31st, 2020. The scope of work includes park and landscape maintenance service for 14 park and landscape areas. Executive Landscape agrees to extend its agreement on the same terms and conditions for one year, extending the agreement through January 31st, 2021. The annual cost of $333,300 is budgeted for the current fiscal year. It is the department's recommendation that council approve the Third Amendment to this agreement with Executive Landscape for the extension of services for one year, ending January 31st, 2021.
They would develop any kind of a performance evaluation tool for this contract?
Not that aware of.
No.
It seems to me, I mean, not that I'm unhappy with their service, but I think if we're gonna continue to look at either extending their contract or down the road, maybe renewing a new contract for them, it'd be nice if we actually had a performance evaluation that was done to show us, here was the scope of work that was expected, here are the results we've seen from that, here's how we rate this on a scale of 1 to 5, or A to B, A to F, so we could have something to refer back to.
What I'd suggest is maybe, and I've done this before where we've had this kind of contract, is it may be something that your parks superintendent, the Tony, maybe on a quarterly basis, goes around with a checklist or something with the contractor to talk about areas that are problem areas, areas where we've been getting some complaints, because we do get some of those things coming in.
Yeah.
And just kind of does a quarterly evaluation of how things are going, and then a year-end cumulative evaluation, here's where we're at, and then you determine, based on his recommendation, do we continue on.
No, so that's what I'm talking about. If we had something like that here today, for example, you know, I would vote... I'm probably gonna vote in favor of this anyways, but it'd be nice to be able to refer to that and say, yeah, look, they've been doing what we wanted, they were evaluated, here's what we said, because we do know in this community, there's a significant population that really does pay close attention to our landscaping and our parks and our roadways. So if we can show them, look, here's evidence that we're following through and monitoring that.
We'll put together an evaluation program then.
That would be great. Something to look out for the next year, then as we move forward.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was also interested what the plan is for those new trees that we displaced in Eager Park. We were asking what the plan was, and they said that the average lifetime of a tree is seven... Urban tree is seven years. Because they aren't maintained properly, so are we planning on putting a drip system or something to keep those going?
I think they're... That's something we can look at. I think also they were referring to plants being placed in the wrong places as well, and not, you know, them outgrowing the areas.
You also have a lot of vandalism with urban trees. It's just, it's one of the things that we're always fighting against, but you're right, and I think maybe that could be part of the... Part of a plan that we put together with parks.
We were looking at putting a list of how many trees the city actually has, and putting a maintenance program for all the trees, so to ensure that we're getting the best out of it.
I'll make a motion.
I've a second. I got a motion and a second, please vote. So recently, I did get a comment about Ayton Road, the landscape in that area, that it looks very nice, so thank you for the hard work on that.
Executive Landscape, as soon as we send them an email or give them a phone call, if there's ever an issue that gets reported, they're very quick on responding and getting it taken care of. And then in addition to that, anytime that, in the past three years that we've been working with them, anytime that we need to have additional plants planted or trees planted, they'll charge for the materials, but they donate their time, so...
In my pocket park, it's the best it's ever looked at in its entire life, except those damn crepe myrtle trees that they planted. I told them when they planted, they're dead when they were planted, and they still are dead.
Crepe myrtles are great trees.
Crepe myrtles crap.
No, 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 no.
No, it is. In fact, you want, I'm gonna take my chainsaw, I'm gonna let chainsaw, I'm gonna cut them down and then...
It's a motion pass. We'll leave that discussion for some other time.
Or just plant more cactus, be spiny and hard to catch.
No, I say I like green trees. I don't like some that look dead. It looks dead. Go to my...
They flower all summer long. How wonderful.
They're ugly.
All right, so moving on to E3, discussion action, professional service agreement between the City of Imperial and Bob Murray and Associates.
Alexis will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have a professional services agreement between the City of Imperial and Bob Murray and Associates. As you're aware, on October 30th, our city manager, Stephen Chatwin, announced his acceptance for a city manager position for the city of Fairfield, California. At your direction, we have entered into contractual negotiations with Bob Murray and Associates. The city has a longstanding history with this firm. For our executive search, they've brought a city managers, not only Mr. Chatwin, but as well as Marlene Best and Vince Long, and they also handed the recruitment for our police chief as well. So before you, you have an agreement in the amount of $17,500. This is not to exceed $24,700, that being for the fact that expense reimbursements will not exceed the amount of $7,200, so total fiscal impact, $24,700.
And as discussed, this is the same amount that was approved to over three years ago, three and a half years ago?
Yes. And it is for the term until the search is completed.
Any questions?
Good. I'll make the motion.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote. Motion pass, 5-0. Moving on, E4, discussion action, range reclassification within management, supervisory, professional, confidential, and collective bargaining units.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is something that we've discussed together, these three reclassifications. Three positions that we're looking at are the human resources manager, an assistant city manager position, and the administrative services director. Human resources manager is currently a human resources analyst. With the addition of responsibilities that will fall to that position, it is... It would be responsible to reclassify that position into a manager's role and provide to it the appropriate pay grade. The management analyst position, with the restructuring that we have discussed, it is recommended that we reclassify that position to an assistant city manager position with a range 101. That position will carry some additional supervisory responsibilities in addition to other responsibilities that it already has or that will be added to that. And then the finance director position will be reclassified to an administrative services director position. With that finance, the administrative services will now have human resources reporting to it, as well as risk management and various other responsibilities potentially in the future, as part of that reclassification. So that's what's before you here. You see there the fiscal impact on the human resources manager. It's a fiscal impact for this year of about $11,800. For the assistant city manager position, reclassification of fiscal impact this year of about $13,000. And for the administrative services director position, reclassification of fiscal impact of around $4,700, $4,800. I'll stand for questions on that.
Any questions? Mr. Gideon? Dale? Second?
No, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. Number one.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, please vote. Okay, motion pass, 5-0.
Make the motion to approve, number two.
Motion, two seconds, please vote. Motion pass, 5-0.
Sweep, I'll make the motion to approve, number three.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, motion pass, 5-0. Moving on, E5, discussion action, reclassification of Director of Information Technology from contract employee to the MSPC Collective Bargaining Unit.
Right, and this is a recommended classification to a range 102. As you know, about a year, I think, ago, or maybe more than that, our information technology fell under a services contract. With that, our IT director, and we've called him the IT director for some time now, has... Would not only provide IT services for us, but as a services contract, he'd provide those services to other communities or other people as well, was able to do that. We changed that from a services contract to a contract with the individual that allowed us to have more access to our IT director and have him more focused on the city without having various other clients out there. It also gave him an opportunity to start to eliminate some of those other clients that he had. As I've spent time with the IT director, taking a look at the future, it makes sense to switch that over from a contract over to an employee position as part of the staff. The range 102 is appropriate based on the high level of technical requirement and skill that's required in that particular position. We also have an IT director who I think has proven their worth over the years, as he has taken care of everything from GIS to all the various other programs and needs that we have, keeping us up to date, making recommendations on how to become more efficient in the city doing our work with new technologies, all while managing a very tight budget to do this. Placing him on a 102, there is... You'll notice there is a very slight fiscal impact. He will essentially be on that range 102, but towards the top of the pay scale. So there are some things there. Once you hit the top of that ceiling, you're not... You do not get merit increases any further. You're eligible for cost-of-living increases, but not merit. So there's potential that this actually saves the city some money in the future, rather than having an open-ended contract where they can continue to get more and more and more. This puts this individual on a scale and puts a ceiling on where they can fall, and he's gonna be at or pretty close to that ceiling as it is, and so the individual will receive cost-of-living increases when they are authorized by the city council, as they are authorized, but not merit. So again, the fiscal impact this year is minor, about $1,100 this year. Future fiscal impact, you're probably looking at a savings by doing it this way. And I'll stand for questions.
You have any questions?
Sure you want this?
I'll say yeah.
Okay, it took a while to get there, so okay, but I'll trust you.
No, I know we asked you this last time, when you went from contract to contract with us, so...
Well, yeah, there's been a lot of years working with the city, so for me and my family, it's like the way to go, so, yeah.
We appreciate the hard work.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
I'll make that motion.
So I have a motion? Please vote. Motion pass, 5-0. Moving on, E6, discussion action, Community Services Department Staffing.
And Amber will take this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Department of Community Services currently provides services to citizens and visitors who utilize the city's libraries, special events, parks, and recreation services. The department's staffing for the community services office currently consists of the director and the recreation specialist. Current staffing for the library are four part-time assistants, library assistants, and one part-time literacy coordinator. Seasonal part-time temporary rec leaders have been brought in sporadically to assist with special events and office support as needed. Authorization to create an administrative assistant position within the community services department will provide consistent customer service for walk-in traffic and telephone calls at the public library and community services office. The position will provide support services for all divisions within the department. The full-time position will be responsible for account receivables, which we have part-time staff at the front handling right now, at the library front counter. The annual salary for the administrative assistant is $34,320 to $48,297. In order to support the fiscal impact, the department is requesting the reclassification of the vacant library supervisor position to library technician, which will have a cost savings of between $19,947 to $28,080. The placement of the administrative assistant at the library front counter will also enable the reduction of hours of the part-time staff, ensuring that all part-time staff stay under their 1,000 hours per year. The department requests city council to authorize the creation of the administrative assistant position within the community services department.
Do we have any questions?
Makes sense. I'll move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Please vote. Motion pass.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Moving on, E7, discussion action, reclassification of library supervisor to library technician.
Amber can wrap this one up, I guess. You pretty much already see what's going on there with that one. Are there any questions, or anything more you want to add, Amber?
Yeah, it's just a very quick statement for those watching on social media. The library supervisor position has been officially vacant since September 21st. As of October, the community service offices has moved into the library building. Staff has evaluated the services required to efficiently and cost-effectively operate within the department. It is recommended to reclassify the library supervisor position to library technician. The library technician is placed at a range 57 on the Teamsters Local Union, 542 salary schedule, with an annual salary of $32,968 to $46,384. The library supervisor position has the annual salary of $52,915 to $74,464. The cost savings is from $19,947 to $28,080. It is the department's recommendation to authorize the reclassification of library supervisor to library technician.
What's your timeline on trying to fill this position?
As soon as possible.
Okay. I'll move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, motion pass, 5-0. Moving on to E8.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Discussion action, asphalt rubber composite overlay along Puerto Vallarta Avenue from Fonzie to Rosadito Drive.
The panel will take this one.
Mayor and council members, the community development department conducted a comparative bid process to overlay the Puerto Vallarta Avenue from Fonzie Avenue to Rosadito Drive. Almost 50% of the road was never completed by the developer and still needed a second asphalt lift. The scope of work included grinding, leveling course, air ram, and asphalt. The construction was successfully completed on November 15, 2019, and staff recommends approval closing amount with final quantities and acceptance of completed work. Now I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
You have any questions? This was paid for with CFT monies?
CFT, that is correct.
And they actually closed out under the contract amount?
Under the contract amount, yes.
Really?
No change orders?
Well, that's the balancing change order, but it can go up or down, either or.
That's absolutely shocking.
So...
In that case, I'll happily make a motion to approve this one.
So I did go drive that today. It's really nice, you know, and so...
It was needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
So Mr....
The... Yeah, so... Make the motion, I'll second. So Mr. Dale, excuse myself, and so I have a motion and a second, so please vote.
Don't get too used to that out there. Take a picture.
The 4-0, yeah. Now, do we have to approve that number one and number two?
Yes.
So that was a motion for number one, and I'll make a motion for number two. Okay, got a motion? A second, please vote. Okay. Once again, that's a 4-0, so thank you very much. Nice job. Thank you. All right, Mr. Dale, you're up. E9, discussion action, labor compliance for wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
Excellent presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as part of the wastewater upgrade project, one of the things that we need to have is some of the performance of the labor compliance portion of the project. We put out to bid the request, an RFP for pricing. We only received one proposal back, it's from the Labor Compliance Consultants of Southern California, in the amount of $30,240. And this is something we need to get in place prior to sending out the notice to proceed to the contractor, so we recommend approval.
Any questions on this? No, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Jeff can second, she was last week.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. Labor compliance. Motion pass, 5-0. Moving on to E10, discussion action, regular meeting of January 1st.
Debbie will present this one, too.
It isn't a question, should we do this or not?
Mr. Mayor and Council, members, your first meeting in January happens to fall on New Year's Day, January 1st of 2020. As you're aware, staff, city hall will be closed, and I'm sure everybody might be out celebrating the night before, and may not want to come in for a meeting, so...
No, I'll be good to come in.
So what you're saying is if we have a meeting, all of these people have to come to work on New Year's Day?
Yes.
I think you should have the meeting. I think so. I'll make the move. Motion approved. No, wait a minute, that's discuss...
Should the meeting come in?
No meeting. No meeting. No meeting. I'm not coming.
Okay, I got a motion to approve to council, or reschedule the city council meeting of January 1st.
If you have to reschedule for emergency, we'll deal with that then.
All right.
There goes my farewell party.
So I got a motion to cancel, reschedule?
If there's no second, it'll die, for lack of a second.
No second.
Ah, darn. She bailed you guys out. All right.
Should've done it on 30 minutes.
Bah humbug. Jeff, you pulled me up right that time on that day anyway.
So motion still pass, 4-1. E11.
Let it be known among city staff who voted against that.
Discussion action, removal and replacement of rubber surfacing at Victoria Park, Sky Ranch, and Savannah Ranch.
Tony's gonna present this first, as well as the next one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here to present the... Or suggest the removal or replacement of rubber surfacing for Sky Ranch Park, Savannah Park, and Victoria Park. The poor and place rubber surfacing at Savannah, Sky, and Victoria are in poor condition and have exceeded life expectancy. An inspection of all three parks confirmed that they need to be completely removed and replaced of the existing surfacing due to weathering, severe granulation, spider cracks, and top layer peeling. Fiscal impact for Savannah is an estimated of $123,600. For Sky Ranch Park, that's a typo, it's $24,000, and for Victoria Park, it would be $106,000. It is department's recommendation...
Flipper.
Yeah. It's the department's recommendation for council to authorize the seeking of bids for the removal and replacement... for the removal replacement of existing rubber surfacing at three three locations.
What's the funding source for this, Amber, so the council knows?
It's from the landscape lighting district.
So we go out and look for replacement of the rubber or using the engineered wood fiber?
All of these three sites or all four sites that we have rubber surfacing on have an under a subsurface of concrete, so it'd be a lot more expensive for the removal because to put engineered wood fiber, we would have to go to a twelve-inch depth for it to be compliant with the standard.
So you're going to put it in pour-in-place?
Yes, so it'd be just removing the existing and and pouring a new system into place.
You also, in the long term, you save money. It's the rubber, if it's taken care of and everything, will last longer than the wood fiber, and so in the long term, it's actually cheaper.
Okay, so we've run into this in eager where we had to tear out and put in the wood fiber because it wasn't maintained. Now we've got three more here that are needing to be pulled out because of basically not having a system for monitoring and maintaining. I see there's another agenda item following, we're going to be doing a pour to repair or seal once, I assume that's the type of maintenance. We're going to be looking fat. So what sort of a timeline plan are you developing to take care of these other three that we're about to spend a third of a million dollars on, or a quarter million dollars on?
When you say timeline, what do you like, how fast do we?
How often are you going to be going in and inspecting? How often are we going to be going back to resurface these?
So the recommended roll coat for this type of weather and most of these playgrounds being in very little shade, having very little shade is once a year at the very latest, once every two years, recommended by the manufacturer. So along with these repour and removals, a lot of these companies offer a class that would teach our staff to roll coat and repair while they're doing the work. So not only will we get that repaired and replaced, we would have staff learn how to do it so that staff can absorb that duty moving forward as far as protecting the surfacing for for we can protect it and give it the longer life.
So would you see any sort of a plan developed then?
Yes.
That's typically when when the pour-in-place is installed, they typically put in a two-year maintenance plan and put that in the budget, so you follow that. So all the parks, unfortunately, that was not done in the beginning. And then in twenty seventeen, we had them inspected and we had the same findings. It just.
I'm not looking back.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That's not my concern, but if we're going forward.
Yeah, exactly.
I wanted to make sure we have something there.
So moving moving forward, we'll have, once the, once it's actually done, the seal will be put on the new system, and then we would put in a maintenance program, and I would recommend probably with this weather, once a year.
That's fine. As long as we sit in writing and we know that there's a schedule for it, that would be helpful.
Can I ask a question? Can, is there any way possible from this point forward, anytime you put a playground structure like this in? I've been saying this since I've been on this council, why aren't we planting trees around these these play structures?
Yeah.
I mean, if you go out in that pocket park, we planted those new desert aspens or whatever they are, I have a forty-foot one in front of my house, and that's it's eight years old. Those trees that were planted two or three years ago are already at fifteen, twenty feet right now. That was three years ago when they were planted. If we planted more of those trees to where they block a lot of that sun, it's just, and it's cooler for the kids to play, the structure's cooler, and it helps you not have.
So with that, answering that question or your 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 question, there's, when we did the planting of the trees, I specifically chose locations surrounding a lot of these rubber surface parks.
Good.
To be shaded in the future.
Yeah. Did you do them with a fast-growth tree like?
I, well, rosewoods are, yes.
Or they get into rosewood.
Right, so that the Sisu or the, the, yes, that that those were planted surrounding the playground for future shading.
Good.
In those areas.
Nothing to say we can't learn from our past and make it better when twenty years down the road, so.
I just am amazed with those trees. When we were kids, we never had those, and they come along and they grow just fantastic and quick.
Okay.
So, good, thank you.
Going forward, this is probably, do you think there's a material we should probably deter developers from using in parks? It just seems like it's too much maintenance. If we have to, we have to change it out every year. Seems so costly.
Well, no, no, we would have to, we have to put the protective roll coating on it every year to 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 keep the the rubber together, because once that roll coating breaks off or it it's no longer, it starts, it starts creating separation, and then you get peeling and those types of things.
The coating.
Yeah, the coating, and yeah, like I mentioned before, that would be something that staff would be doing, not a contractor moving forward.
I think you have a woman at this point, though, maybe if we're looking at other projects, other developments coming in, and more parks than one of us, maybe what we should be looking at, if they're not going to put a shade over their park. Is to have them go down twelve inches and fill in them with sand and then put in the, go with the wood instead, simply because that's going to be over long term, that's why we did it here, over long term, that winds up being more cost-effective.
And I agree with that.
What was the actual Cambria Park, was that was that sand or wood? That's wood chips.
Wood chips.
The pour-in-place actually ends up being more cost-effective in the long run, as long as you maintain it. That's the big.
Well, that's fine.
As long as it's shaded well, but Cambria Park has a really nice shade, I love that that shade over there.
You know, it'll be an interesting negotiation point going forward with the developers, though, who are trying to now wanting to build without CFDs. We need to consider the fact that without CFDs, you know, we would be paying out a general fund to do these repairs on parks that they're putting in. So as they're coming in and building future developments in this town, we need to really seriously think about what do we want the developer to build in as far as fee structure to support those amenities? I'm thinking right now, several projects we have that are underway, they're going to cost us millions of dollars in the long run, and we're only able to fund them because we have access to those CFD funds. And they want to promote new housing developments without CFDs, but they want all those amenities. That's going to come out of our general fund, so we need to weigh that in.
Stupid question. Why do we have to have all this? Why can't you have nice green grass that's fluffy and kids can play on it? We all survive.
Correct. I'll give you this one.
I mean, that or or sand, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, seriously.
With that, you get into a lot of compliance issues as far as falling and fall absorption. So whenever you have, you know, a platform at different heights, whether it's four foot, six foot or eight foot, you install a system accordingly to your fall height, so.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to buy bubble wrap?
It would, yes.
legality-wise, would it be?
And and sand, sand unfortunately is not ADA compliant, so that that's where we run into that now.
I get it, I do. But I certainly think that's something we're going to have to consider with the developers because they're coming in and bringing forward projects, and they don't want to put CFDs in. I get it, but at the same time, if we're going to be able to maintain the parks, the walls, you know, et cetera, we need resources to do that, and that can't come out of, yeah, and that can't come out of our, out of our general fund every time. We've got to make sure there's something there for that.
So the sand isn't ADA compliant, but the wood chips are?
Yes.
Sand's bad because of cats, that's their.
Giant litter.
And then kids are up there playing with Tootsie Rolls, they make that too.
Thank you, Tony, appreciate the information. I'll make a motion to approve number one.
Second. Got a motion and a second, please vote.
Gosh, I remember the good old days where we had that slide over there, it was metal and it was two hundred and eighty degrees in the summer time, and we survived, it was amazing.
You're also the one that rode off the roof of your house on your bike. That's right.
Motion pass five oh.
I'll make a motion to approve number two.
Motion, second, please vote.
I can tell you stories about people making money off of falling off those slides.
Yeah. Well, never mind, I'm going to say nothing. I'll make a motion to approve number three. Okay, motion pass five oh. Got a motion and a second, please vote.
The only playground, playset thing they needed to get rid of was the, what was the one that?
That was the best one.
No, I know, but not only we, so we'd just take a motorcycle and just take it.
Mary go round.
Very, I think, and then give it to about fifty miles an hour, it was cool, kids flew everywhere.
Motion pass five oh. Moving on to E four, discussion action maintenance. Rubber surfacing at Aviation Park.
Tony has this one.
Mayor, council members, this is for the maintenance and repair of the rubber surfacing at Aviation Park. To ensure the pour-in-place rubber surfacing has a longer life expectancy and is protected from weathering and damage, it is recommended that the surfacing is roll coated every two years. The existing pour-in-place rubber surfacing at Aviation Park requires roll coating and minor patches from wear and tear. The estimated fiscal impact would be seven thousand six hundred, and this would be coming out of the landscape lighting district, and it is department's recommendation for council to authorize the seeking of bids for the maintenance and repair of the rubber surfacing.
Question age on that?
Five, it's going to go, it's going on a sixth year, I believe.
That's original, right?
Yes.
It was installed.
Two fifteen, twenty fifteen, oh, so five years, yes.
You know, a question, seven thousand rubber?
Yes.
And is the structure in fairly decent, you know, it's in good shape right now?
The surfacing?
Do the overlay.
Yes.
There's patches.
There's there's some minor tear, and it's not at that point where the granulation is such where you can't roll coat it and get a warranty from from the person or the company that's doing it.
It's getting there.
Yes.
When you're talking about a roll coat, is this just a a material that you put on and then roll it onto the top of the surface of the of the rubber mat or what it?
It's it's a glue substance that binds the rubber surfacing together to prevent separation and cracking.
Okay, and so basically, though.
Yes, it's rolling it on.
Okay. And you were proposing to do this every two years?
Every.
Every?
Every year.
Every year?
Every year.
I think that's fantastic. No, I think it's a long.
You know, Jeff, if it saves those parks.
No, I'm just looking at the cost of what it's costing.
I mean, how nice would it be if we could have caught eager ten years ago and made, you know, gotten it to where it were five years ago? So we would have to tear it all out. But also understand that what he's what he's recommending in the future is that our guys learn how to do this rather than seeing it on labor. Have them, we'll do it ourselves.
Yes, so there'll be a savings on that to where we won't have to hire somebody to do that on a continual basis. Park staff will be able to write.
That's great.
So this is where.
This one would be a bid.
A bid.
Yes.
But then in the.
In the future, yes, moving forward, yes.
That's the way we'd love to see it. So move.
Okay, got a motion and a second, so I do have a comment, Tony, this is one of those, I had a conversation over this park on Monday, and how, you know, these newer parks that we have that are really nice, but the vandalism really hurts us, and this is one of those ones that we talked about, and I know we brought it up here a couple meetings ago that, you know, we try, we try, and but vandalism really hurts us, and this is the cost behind it. But where we can, you know, take it and our staff can learn how to do this can save us a lot of money and get those parks, you know, nice looking for our residents.
What was the vandal?
They broke one of the airplanes, they broke the sign, ripped off the sign, kicked down the lights.
Don't we have cameras in parts?
I don't know about that one.
Even with the cameras, it's hard to identify, it's hard to identify, sometimes you can, and you can kind of use that as part of the investigation. Neighborhood watches, if you have good active neighborhood watches in all the neighborhoods, that can help. But vandalism is, unfortunately, it's.
Chief is.
Our neighborhood watch, people.
And we can really get, because this, I mean, we don't even stop it, I mean, the ones that are vandalizing may be the same ones vandalizing in other places, too, it's.
And 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 that's probably right. What we do on our side is try and document every situation, every case we come across, whether when we're doing our parks inspections with PD, that do a report and then, you know, pictures and removal to have just kind of documentation of how 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 often and how much damage they cause, because, you know, sometimes it's very minimal, it's, you know, a marker, and, you know, sometimes it it can cost thousands and thousands of dollars.
Was I saying, do we have anything, I remember one time, we had something with a little bit of teeth that we'd have to actually go out to the parents of these kids and can we still do that to where we can put a lien against them if they pay restitution or do something to pay this back? Because this is not fair to the citizen. I know we did it at one time, but could we still do that?
There there is state law that makes parents responsible. I think the big issue is catching.
And this is the same neighborhood where the wall gets knocked down. You know, it's the same, it's probably the same group of kids that are doing the same thing.
So that's what I'm saying, maybe we need to find some way of putting up cameras that are in a different angle or cross angles that we can actually get good face on it, some lighting, more lighting, because they're obviously doing this in the evening, I'm sure, when they're tearing it up.
Rock salt.
Oh, I agree with you. No, I'd really.
Neighborhood watch with rock salt.
Oh, the guy from Singapore that whipped all those kids assholes, that's what they need.
Rock salt hit me out of watermelon field a couple times. See them at work?
So I have a motion.
Oh, so I'll make the motion.
No, I already had one, motion and a second, so please vote. But Tony, Amber, thank you guys very much for the hard work on the parks, it looked really nice.
God. You know, it's the parents, too.
Motion pass five zero.
My kids pour up structures or vandalize or graffiti, I'd beat their ass till they couldn't sit down. It's ridiculous.
Do we have editing software?
Then they wonder why their kids are in prison.
I do want to add on that, though, with the airplanes, we have had a lot of vandalism through the years on those two rocking airplanes. So looking at the pour-in-place from the bend of it, from people using it, it's also tearing up the pour-in-place rubber, so we're going to be looking at removing those and replacing it with a different play feature.
Yeah.
Like every time I see those at parks, wherever it is, they're always broken. Yeah. It's like liability.
The big drum that you have at Buckland Park, you can use.
I love that, we used to try and launch kids. And break yourself on it, it's like, good times.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, moving on to E thirteen, discussion action Imperial Light Parade and Market Days report.
And this is going to be Amber presents.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have two maps that we're going to put on the screens for you, so we can kind of go over the route, give you some basic information, and then answer any questions that you may have. So the city of, we're going to start with the Market Days map right now, and the Market Days is going to be held on the north end of Barione Boulevard. So as you're aware, the city of Imperial is hosting the Imperial Light Parade in Market Days this Saturday, December fourteenth, from five P M. until ten P M. Starting at five P M., Imperial Market Days will be held on the north end of Imperial Avenue between Tenth and Barione. Seventy-six spaces were available for the December event, and all spaces have been reserved. So we are taking lists of other people wishing to participate, just in case we have some cancellations. The ice skate, the synthetic ice skating rink will be located on the east end of Ninth Street. Ice skates will be available in sizes nine youth through thirteen men's, so. Councilman Dale can squish his little toes.
Nine youth, that that's for little kids?
Nine youth and then thirteen.
They know your socks.
And so and these skates are going to be made available for free public use to ice skate. Tina Michelle and the Rainstone Cowboys will perform on the main stage area, which is located at Barione and Imperial Avenue, which that's where we always have our main stage, so there's no changes with that. And they will perform from five P M., which is the start of Imperial Market Days, until six P M. That will be entertaining the people that are waiting for the parade, entertaining the attendees of the Market Days, and then they will announce to everyone to go to their seats for the parade before the parade starts. Starting at six P M., we'll move to the map for the Parade of Lights. The Parade of Lights will travel north along Imperial Avenue, starting at Second Street, turn left at Barione Boulevard, and travel west towards D Street, ending at the Imperial High School. The new route was recommended by the Special Event Committee, which consists of fire, police and community services. The route is redesigned to accommodate the size of the parade, of the parade attendees, The route is redesigned to accommodate the size of the parade, um, of the parade attendees and in the, and in response to traffic concerns from recent, uh, years. Parade staging will take place at four PM, and entries will be judged at five PM. Judged categories include the Mayor's Award, the Grand Marshal Award, Rogers and Rogers Award, School Spirit Award, and the Imperial Crown Award. The winner of each category will have a banner presented before them in the parade and will be announced the, as the winning category. Following the parade, winners will be stationed at Barione Boulevard for the duration of Market, of the Market Days event. Street closures will begin at eleven AM. Residents south of Barione Boulevard will be allowed access to and from their homes through D and E Streets, turning west on Barione and using Laboristry and, and Austin Roads to enter and exit the city during the event. Parade staging will begin at four PM on First and Second Streets. Los Vigilantes will be assisting the city with staging. Residents in the impacted areas will be notified by three different forms of communication, via utility bill insert, email, and door hangers. Parade entries will enter from Worthington to D Street to First and Second Street, or First or Second Street, depending on their staged area. Parade entries will exit north on Laboristry to Twelfth Street, having the option of Twelfth Street, Belford, or Knuckle Road. Group entries will exit south on D Street to unload at Ben, the Ben Hulse parking lot. Parade announcing, um, will be, will be stationed at Second, Fourth, Sixth, the intersection of Barione and Imperial Avenue, G and E Streets. The Police Command Center will be located behind the main stage. AMR has committed a unit to be on this, on site next to the Command Center, and the fire will be stationed on Seventh Street near H Street. We have, um, use of twenty-five radios from IVECA, which, um, those will be distributed to, um, staff, so we can have communications throughout the event.
What time are you closing access to Second Street?
I will turn to Public Services, he has...
Between eleven and one. As we get to it, not to our window.
And residents living inside the box, choosing to leave town for whatever reason after eleven o'clock, will have to exit out over on D or E onto Worthington and go out westbound that way.
Yes.
So we're lining up on both First and Second.
Correct.
Could we make sure that on First and Second, maybe at the front, and maybe towards the middle or the end on each street, fortifying?
Yes, those are, um, planned.
Repeat to me, where did you say groups would be, um, able to exit at the end?
Groups, um, they will be notified to exit at, uh, on D Street, they can use, utilize the parking lot at Ben Hulse, um, that way they can be picked up by parents.
This parade route is really nice. This, this takes us back to the days of, of the fare parade, that's how it started, so, and I like the idea of going down to the school, that's pretty cool.
Will the school be open to assist with anything or no? Or that was all gonna be locked down? Do we know?
Um, no, they're...
They've committed to Ben Hulse.
Yeah.
I think it's intended, it'll stay locked, we're not planning on using the school grounds at all.
We're trying to move the traffic away from the end of, um, the parade, which is right in front of Imperial High School, so we want to take them, um...
We want to get them off of Barione when the parade ends, rather than having, you remember with the Andy Ruiz thing, you had all the congestion there, where they were kind of turning into parking lot? This is to get them heading south now, away from the parade route, uh, and, and, and then dropping off people a little bit further away, where they can be picked up by parents.
And then the other ones are gonna go north on Laboristry?
Correct. Then they have three options of, um, exiting.
Okay. Will they're, if they decide to park anywhere, there're gonna be problems parking on the, on that bank by the high school? Do we know?
It's private property.
The IID property?
Yeah.
They can get there, I guess, that's open, right? Is that street there where the bank is behind the outfield open, we're not closing that street off, right?
No, we're not closing that street off.
So as far as parking there, we don't have anything to do with that, that's IID property. If IID wants to block that off and say no parking, similar to what they did with the Andy Ruiz celebration, that's up to them. Um, and we'll reach out to IID and let them know, just in case, if they want to do something there.
I'm not sure I'm understanding, if someone tried to leave at six thirty PM, how do they get out of that neighborhood? Sorry?
D Street.
So they're gonna drive down D Street to the, where the parade is ending at six thirty PM, so where the floats are coming to, they're gonna drive out and hang on left?
Yeah.
Only for one night.
No, I, I get it, but...
Could we, could we open the other road, though, for that one night to deter traffic around? To Laboristry, back by the water plant around that way?
B.
Reverse the one-way for that, reverse the one-way for that night?
I have the guys that are gonna be stationed both at D or Laboristry and Barione, and D and Barione are a lot of in and out. I have, I have guys already planning to... I would suggest you reverse...
Don't change it now, okay.
How many floats do we have so far?
Um, three hundred and forty-two.
Parade entries? We have twenty-something entrants so far, but it's very early, the way this usually goes is, uh, folks sign up a day or two before the parade, but we are, we are, uh, proactively reaching out to them, we, we've done that via email, and we're making calls now, reaching out to folks who've done this in the past, to get an answer as to whether or not they're planning on being in or not.
Is there like a big shortcut link on our webpage that somebody can go to, just click a button, it takes them away, they can sign in?
Yep. Big rotating banner.
Okay.
And stuck at the top of our website, so with all the information and applications.
Just the ones happens in last...
It does, it really does.
Seventy entries in the last...
Yeah, that's fine.
The, uh, no, no schools, bands and stuff like that?
I would need to review, I, I know Imperial is, um, signed up, I am not sure about the other cities.
We've not had, uh, at least in the years that I've been around, to the many other cities.
You drew a few small groups to come in, and that's usually not the extent of it, so...
Well, you would be judging the parade? Traditionally, we've had, they've had judges, we don't need to...
Yes, yes, um, so we have, um, some sponsors that will be assisting with judging, um, we have our mayor that will be judging his own category, our grand marshal judging their own category, and then we've invited Rogers and Rogers to judge the vehicle category.
That judging takes place before the parade?
Correct.
Yes.
So, uh, unlike in years past, what's more typical is you do judging for most of the categories before the parade starts, uh, and, you know, unless it's like judging the music portion of a band or something, uh, but, so that's gonna take place before the parade happens.
Well, I look forward to the new route, I look forward to this, uh, new, uh, Market Day Parade, and so, yeah, I think it'll be fun.
I love the arrangement of the market, I love the arrangement, uh, the parade route with one exception, but that's okay, and I'm just, I'm hoping to be proven wrong with my worries on Second Street and on D, and that's, and I trust your, your guys, again, I just have to see it happen, but I like what we're doing with it, I think it's the right direction to go, and have fun with it.
Uh, we did have one, um, more meeting to confirm, uh, with the public services, fire department, and the, uh, police department, and so they did sit down with a large map, looked at all the, um, areas that are gonna be blocked off, and there was no concerns that they had, so hopefully, um, our residents will be happy, and hopefully they'll attend the, attend the event.
Barricades, we'll be using the heavy barricades for this stuff?
Yes.
Very cool. Six announcing stations?
Yes.
Still?
Yes.
That's important, I mean, the vast, on the other parades, we've got two, so that'll be nice, and keep everybody more in the loop of what's going on, and hopefully get them over to Market.
Yes.
I think that'll be awesome. Um, okay, thanks.
Dale and, Ms. Eugenie, any questions? Ms. Tucker?
Nope.
Ms. Dale?
Appreciate it.
No.
Ms. Peckel? Okay, you got a motion?
Got a motion. I don't know what the action is.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't action, it says right there.
There's nothing there to act on.
It says action.
Yeah, well...
I wanted to vote on it.
I agree.
So, go do it.
I'm supporting that.
All right.
Well done.
Good job. All right, so moving on to F, uh, for reports, mayor and council member reports, so we'll start on my right, Ms. Eugenie?
How much here, it's had a good Thanksgiving, hopefully everyone enjoyed their Thanksgivings as well, looking forward to all these Christmas festivities, the route looks great, thank you for everyone's work so far, and, um, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker?
Um, no, just asking for that community support in a, in our search for our interim city manager and full-time city manager, because it's a very tough decision, so, need your help.
Thank you. Dale?
Just had a fantastic Thanksgiving, and a lot of people in our neighborhood had a good time, so it's, it's nice, so I should, look forward to Parade Lights, much praise, thanks to staff for all the hard work.
Ms. Peckel?
Um, number one, I really liked seeing our signs being used to promote the dates and the times and the closures, so people would have ample warning, uh, the one over this morning was still out, over by the high school, so... Okay, but I'm glad to see, we have them, I'm glad to see them out getting used, that was great, so, that's cool. Um, Chief, the, the enforcement on the highway has hit social media, good job, that's what we wanted, people recognize that it's real, and I'm glad, so, thank you for that, and otherwise, I'm looking forward to this, I'm very excited about Market Days coming up, and, um, Market Day, I'm looking forward actually to Christmas in a small town this weekend, and looking for that success for the Chamber, so I'm glad to see things moving forward and moving into a great time of year, and wonderful Thanksgiving, and hopefully the weeks ahead are gonna be a blessing, um, and I will echo what James said, I hope everybody's patient and supportive as we go forward in our movement into finding an interim and finding a permanent city manager again, and keep the city going.
Thank you. So, I echoed some of this stuff, I'm glad, I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and it was, everybody ate a lot, I know, uh, I know I did, um, know we got a little bit of rain, again, so, Jackie, thanks to the staff for all the hard work, I know that water's gotta go somewhere, so, and now they work hard to pump the water out of the retention bases, as, exactly, it's gotta go somewhere, so, um, please let staff know, say, thank you for the, the hard work on that, and, you know, the hard work that everybody does to keep the city running. Look forward to the parade, uh, Market Days, and, you know, Mr. Peckel was saying the, uh, what is it, uh, Christmas in a Small Town on Saturday, um, that one and, uh, the...
Jingle mingle.
That one, the jingle and mingle's coming up next week, and then we have, uh, the Navy Base Parade, uh, on Friday, so that's another one that's looking forward to, so, uh, there's a lot of good stuff coming, so, thank you staff for everything, and, uh, um, I do have one big thing that I can ask Mr. Chetwyn, is, uh, I did have a call from resident in regards to Alejandro Street, maybe you can help with that, I guess they're drag racing, racing down Alejandro Street, so, there's something speeding down, speeding down, so... So, appreciate it, that's all, so, other than that, I, thanks for all the hard work and...
Before I can go out with a timer and...
I was hoping they were, when they said they were drag racing, it was a little race, the little remote control cars, like they were doing at Ricochet? Oh, sorry, but I, I know we're doing, I know Police Department's doing good work, cause we have it on the report, so...
All three thousand or four thousand?
Four thousand three hundred and eighty.
That's awesome.
Nice. So, thank you guys very much for the hard work, so with that, we'll move on to, uh, Hefus' report. City manager.
Uh, you, you have the city manager's report in front of you, uh, Chief Estrada sends his regrets, he was on his way in and had to stop in a two-car accident that held him up, and the battalion chief is in Winter Haven on a call, so, uh, he, uh, he's apologizes for not being able to be here. Just a reminder, we have our employee Christmas party as well coming up, if you have not had a chance to RSVP for that, please do so. It is, uh, advertised as a party for the adults, uh, however, uh, if, if you're unable to get babysitting or you, you, you have a child that you want to bring, please, uh, feel free to bring, uh, your, your child along, we just won't have, like we've had in years past, some of the games and things that cater towards the kids, uh, we're, we're trying something a little bit different this year, and it's gonna be a great, it'll be a great party, a great celebration, we look forward to having you all there. If it's your high school, uh, kid that doesn't have anything better to do that night, uh, tell him to go to a movie or hang out with his buddies and, uh, and, uh, leave him at home or, or whatever, uh, but, feel free to bring your, your children if you can't get babysitting or whatever, we'd love to see them there. Uh, other than that, I'll stand for questions if you have any for me.
Any questions? Dana? All right, thank you. Miss Loper?
That's good.
Always good. Good. Chief? All right. Amber? Alex? Laura? Autumn? Okay, so I did notice one thing, we all kind of trimmed down, those days, November's are off, so...
What do you mean, we all?
Oh, well, that's natural, yeah, but, uh, so, yeah, with that, moving on, let me see, uh, Navy Base.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, uh, we're about to shut down for the Christmas holiday, so, uh, we're, it's gonna get very, very quiet here shortly, uh, we'll get the last few squadrons out here, and, uh, then we're gonna close down for our maintenance on the runway for the rest of the year. We'll be reopening, uh, first part of next year, first week of January, we'll be reopening up, and we all know what that means, right? Special visitors come?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, we do have our holiday parade this Friday, uh, it is open to the public, it is free parking, free access, free every, well, free cookies, we had to pay for the pizza and the nachos. Last year, we had twelve hundred people attend from the community, we're hoping to boost that, and we're thankful very much for your participation this year, we look forward to having you all, and we want to thank you very much for a great year of support to the base, we couldn't do our job without you guys supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, Chris, uh, it seems like the Navy, uh, personnel always participate in our parade, uh, each year, don't they, and, uh, didn't we have, uh, entrance from the Navy last year at the, at the parade?
Yes, sir, normally you have, uh, our boss contractor, uh, which wins every year, so, um...
We, I think the, the council shares in this, uh, our appreciation for the Navy's participation in all of our special events and things, and we noticed, uh, your base manager is, uh, a lot of the mixing, mixers and things like that, it's, it's great to see that, uh, participation.
And Amber has even asked us, and we will have, one of the judging stations will be handled by a couple of our sailors this year. So we're definitely wanting to continue this partnership, and I think it's really good, and I'm looking for, forward to twenty twenty, uh, we've got a couple of things we're cooking up on the base that we're going to, uh, reveal next year, if we can get all the logistics done, it'll be a really good, uh, possibly a paintball tournament with our staff versus your staff, meaning your leadership, the city council, versus my diehard helo pilot, so we'll see what happens.
Unless they waited until I left, before they did that.
Yes, so that's one of the things, we're looking, uh, we've got some of our resources and all that, and, uh, so we're looking at doing some more fun things around the valley, including all of our, our community partners. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I did miss Debbie, you have anything? Uh, Ms. Maria?
Nothing.